All right, don't sweat it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting. We have council members and our staff in person, and also some of our guests are in the chamber in person. But we also have guests on Zoom. So tonight's meeting can be accessed through burnsvillemn.gov/meetings, or people can also watch us on Comcast, channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's website and in the council's agenda packet. And now, we move on to announcements, and our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Our council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, February 22 at 5:30 p.m. and Tuesday, March 8 at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session scheduled for Tuesday, February 15 at 5:30 p.m. All meetings are held here in the council chambers unless we let people know that a meeting will be at a different location. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the council on an item that is not on our printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council? Ms. Collins, anyone in queue?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will now move on to additions to the final agenda. This is for emergency items only. And Mr. Lindberg, are there any additions to the final agenda?
Madam Mayor, we do have one change tonight that we'd like the council to consider in relation to item 5A. Just today, we received some quotes related to the pre-purchase of some signal equipment. We'd like the council to consider that as part of Ms. Desroot's presentation and the recommendations that are in item 5A this evening.
Okay. Members of the council, may I have a motion to add this item to 5A?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. Members of the council, do you have any additions to the final agenda? Okay, thank you. And now, we will then move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on the consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Ms. Collins, anyone in queue?
No, Madam.
Okay. City Manager Lindberg, does anyone from staff want an item to be removed?
This one's a little easier. Nothing from staff, Madam Mayor.
Good. Members of the council. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda, the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. The first item on the regular agenda is item 5A, and this is a public hearing. This is a resolution ordering the street improvements, approving the plans and specifications, and ordering the advertisements for bids for the 2022 Street Improvement Project. And presenting is our city engineer, Ms. Jen Desroot. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Before I begin, I would like to introduce to you our new Assistant City Engineer, Logan Velasity, and he's over there by Ryan.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
It's his second day, so I'm not having him do this presentation. Today and next year, he can do it.
Okay, spell his last name for us.
Go ahead, Logan.
Thank you.
It feels like a spelling bee.
Velasity. Yeah, Velasity. Because during our council meetings, I always address everyone by their surname. And welcome.
Thank you.
So tonight, I will be presenting our street improvement program for 2022. We have a big project area this year. So this is the map. Areas in green are rehabilitation areas, and the areas in red are the reclamation areas. So we have work in the heart of the city, Colonial Area, ridges in Portland, West Park, Brunel Park, and Southcross Heights, and Buck Hill Road. With the street improvement program, we have three improvement strategies. This year, we do not have any reconstructions on the project. We'll be having reclamation and rehabilitation. So with the reclamation, it's a full pavement replacement. We do some spot curb replacement as needed. We do sanitary sewer repairs, storm sewer upgrades and repairs. For the rehab part of the project, it's just removing the top two inches of the pavement, and then we do the same thing with curb replacement. It's just as needed, and then sanitary sewer repairs as needed. The note at the bottom, all of these strategies, we have looked at for complete streets and multimodal review, a signal review when there's traffic signals, sidewalk repairs for ADA upgrades if there's miscellaneous tree removals needed, and then streetlight evaluation. So we're looking at all encompassing when we are looking at these project areas. We have a very detailed project timeline in front of you, but this whole thing started about a year ago when we ordered the preliminary report to get us started on the project. And then, we, from there, did some preliminary work and had several open houses. Starting last year, we started doing those open houses in the neighborhoods, and we continued that on this year. So we had four open houses. Three of them were in the neighborhoods, and one was at City Hall, to give lots of options for people to attend. Also of note, the council approved a JPA with Lakeville for some work that we were doing over in their border, and I'll describe that more later. Also to note, our traffic review, our traffic committee reviewed for complete streets on December 17. And then, on December 21, the council received the preliminary report, ordered the public hearing for tonight, and then ordered plans and specs. We are doing, or proposing to do some complete streets and multimodal improvements. So we had, on Buck Hill Road and the ridges area, so we had a virtual open house with both of those areas to walk through the property owners in those neighborhoods or in those, on those streets. We mailed the public hearing notices on January 21, and then the notices, public hearing notice was published in the paper on January 21 and 28. So all of that is statutorily required for projects with special assessments. Tonight is our public improvement hearing. And then, for construction, we're anticipating receiving bids in March. Tentatively, we'll be back on April 19 to award contracts and have the assessment public hearing. This is also something new that we did, started last year, having the assessment public hearing at the same time we awarded the contracts. Construction will occur May through October, and then we will send out a customer satisfaction survey postcard that also lets people know that if they want to prepay their assessment, the deadline's approaching, which is November 15. And then, we'll go back and final restoration in the spring of 2023. So here are some pictures, some before pictures that just show the need for the work. In the heart of the city area, you can see the pavement is in rough shape. We won't be replacing concrete with this project, so those concrete parking pads will stay, and we'll just be doing the pavement. And this is a rehabilitation area. In the ridges area, this is another area where we'll be doing pavement rehab. The Colonial Area, this is a reclamation area, so full pavement replacement. And Southcross Heights area is also in that reclamation area. And Buck Hill Road is a rehab street. So those pictures show just the need for the project. At the end of the project, we will be taking after pictures, and we can share those with the council. As you all know, you approved a multimodal plan and a complete streets policy in October of 2021. Since it was approved in the fall, we didn't have any budget added to the CIP. But we did review for opportunities, cost-effective opportunities for both complete streets and multimodal. And then, we did go through those opportunities with our traffic committee on December 17. So even though the policy wasn't requiring us to do it for the 2022 projects, it will officially start in 2023, we did look for some opportunities and found some. So one thing I wanted to note, Buck Hill Road, the multimodal plan shows off-street trail between Crystal Lake Road and Southcross. And there are right-of-way constraints there, so it was not feasible to complete that work with this project. We'll be looking for funding in the future because there is a real need to complete that stretch. But with this project, it's just not funded or feasible. There's easement acquisition that's needed to occur. However, we are proposing to convert from a four-lane section to a three-lane section. And we have these in other places that you're aware of. We just recently did that on Travelers' Trail in Portland. There's a number of places. And it does slow speeds down, and it provides a safer roadway for people. In this case, the traffic volumes permit us to make this conversion. Another pedestrian update we're making is at Buck Hill Road and Southcross, the pedestrian crossing. Right now, you can see the zebra crosswalk doesn't have a median refuge, and we'll be moving that so that it does, so that if someone were crossing, they have a place that they can stop and take a break without having to make the way, all the way across five lanes of traffic, plus the median. We are doing some work on Buck Hill Road's signals, so adding pedestrian countdown timers, flashing yellow arrows, new cabinets and controllers. That is the request to add to tonight, to purchase the signal equipment in advance of bidding, because there is about a 12-week lead time to purchase that equipment. So if we get out ahead of it, we'll be ready for our contractor a little sooner. So I appreciate you adding that to the agenda tonight. Thank you. We have a JPA with Lakeville to rehab this section that's in their, on their side of the border. We reached out to them and notified them that we are doing our section, and it makes sense if they wanted to, to continue on through to the 162nd Street. The JPA was approved in November with Burnsville managing the project and Lakeville paying the construction costs plus 23% indirect costs. Right now, that estimate is about $344,000. Lakeville's reviewing the plans right now. We anticipate them being included in this project. Moving on to Nicolet Boulevard and Portland Avenue in the ridges area. So we found that this would be a good area to add on-street bike lanes. On Portland, the construction limits are just to, I think it's just to the roundabout, or maybe it's just to the south of the roundabout. But already, there's a three-lane section all the way to County Road 42, no parking on either side, wide shoulders. And so, we can add the pavement markings and signage to have on-street bike lanes. People are probably already doing it anyway, but it's now going to be a marked route. And then, I'll show in a moment how we can add on-street bike lanes on Nicolet Boulevard. And that will create a connection between McAndrews and 42 and Nicolet Avenue and Portland. So here is the top image, is the existing four lanes with the median, and the bottom is what we're proposing, a driveline in each direction and converting one lane to a buffer, a striped buffer, and then a bike lane. The median won't change. The turn lanes won't change in the median. So we were asked that question, will the left turn lanes remain? And they will. So that median will stay. We're not proposing any changes there. One thing to note, when we had our virtual open house with people from that area, they were thinking this was a good thing to keep traffic slowing it down. We wouldn't be proposing any vertical delineators in that buffer area because cars can pull into it if an emergency vehicle is coming by. So...
Especially when on Portland, you have the same that you're proposing.
Another improvement that we're proposing is enhanced pedestrian crossings in two locations. So already, there are enhanced pedestrian crossings across Nicolet Boulevard between the hospital and then the employee parking. But we would, we're proposing to shorten the distance of the pedestrian crossing by including bumpouts. And with the bike lane there, we can easily bump out and have enough room for the bikes to go in between. We already have RRFBs there, but we're going to be upgrading those. And so, this will be something that we presented to the hospital, and they were appreciative of that effort to make pedestrian crossings safer. Some neighborhood issues that we have been working through. So in the Knox Drive area, there are three speed humps existing that were already there. Now's the time, if the neighborhood didn't want them anymore, to remove them with the reclamation project. We sent out a survey. 90% said, please keep them, so we will be putting them back.
See how people want them, and then they don't want to let them go. They're asked a lot.
Yeah. So 90%, if they want it, then keep it.
Don't we not necessarily love it for the plowing and other things, but for speed slowing down traffic, they work?
Another sort of unique issue is on Hollow Park Lane. There is restricted access out to Burnsville Parkway, only allowing one way out northbound. Again, an opportunity to make that all full access. Surveyed the neighborhood, 87% said, please keep that, and so we will be putting it back just as it is today. And then, on Emerson Court, we have these sort of partial cul-de-sacs or bumpouts, and now's the time also to remove those. It's a lot of extra pavement that isn't necessary. We surveyed the neighborhood on the one to the east. One of the neighbors wanted to keep it, so we are keeping it. On the one to the west, all the neighbors said to take it out, so we're taking it out. So we're listening to what the neighbors are wanting to say on issues like this, where it will be an issue for their neighborhood. Moving on to funding. So there's a lot of funding sources for this project, for these types of projects. Taxes, the infrastructure trust fund, special assessments, all the utility funds, water, sewer, storm, street lighting, and then Buck Hill, part of Buck Hill Road, Nicolet Boulevard, and Portland are all state aid eligible, so we will be getting some state aid funds for this project. For the special assessment, we determine the rate based on land use, which is essentially how wide is the street. So a typical residential street has a certain width, and multifamily will be a little wider, commercial even wider. So we have, that is how we determine the rate. And then, we have a front-footage calculation where we base it off of 30 feet back from the property line. A couple of years ago, the council approved a change to assess single families per unit, and so that will be in effect again this year. The assessments are calculated to be up to 40% of the street cost, but as you'll see in a future slide, it's far less than that. We use a three-year average, which, you know, brings the assessments down. And we don't assess for utilities, at least 60%, but more than that usually, of the street work and any other work that we're doing that's unrelated to the street. So, for example, we are doing some signal work. We are not assessing for the signal work. That's above and beyond what we would assess for. Here are the rates for 2022. I grade out reconstruction because we do not have any reconstruction areas this year, but our reclamation for single family is 2185, which works out to be $2,024 per single-family unit. And on the rehab, 1612 per foot, which works out to be $1,741 per unit. For multifamily and other, the front, the footage, they're still based on a front-footage. So for the reclamation, 3358 per foot, and for all other types of properties, 4789 per foot. And the rehab rates for multifamily is 2188 per foot, and for all other types, 2681 per foot. For payment, assessments can be prepaid in full by November 15 of 2022. So after we have the assessment hearing, tentatively scheduled for April 19, then anyone can pay off their assessment in full anytime between that date and November 15, 2022. If they choose, they can repay over a period of years with interest of 3.5%. And those years are based on the amount of the assessment. So all of our single-family reclaims would be for 15 years, and the rehabs would be for 10 years. Other city assessments, just as a comparison, there are a few cities around us that don't have special assessments. But if you look at ours compared to the other cities, we are on the very, very low end of what other cities are assessing for similar work. And then, here is the cost breakdown based on estimated costs. So the estimated total project cost is about 9.2 million. About 1.4 of that is special assessments. 3.2 is from ITF, about 2.4 from MSA, our storm utility, 382,000. The water and sewer utility is about 1.4 million. We're doing a small alleyway in the heart of the city, which is going to be paid for out of the facilities fund, so that's that little 23,000. And then, Lakeville's portion is about 344,000. One thing I noted in the agenda background is that these estimated costs are higher than we had anticipated during budgeting. We had received word that bituminous prices are high. Because oil prices are higher. So we'll see what we get for bids, but we are anticipating a little bit higher prices this year. For communication, we have our website, burnsvillemn.gov/roadwork, and then two emails, construction@burnsvillemn.gov and assessments@burnsvillemn.gov. And we encourage anyone who's on the project to subscribe for updates, and they can do that right from that website. And when they do subscribe, once the project gets started, they'll get weekly updates for what's happening on the project. And then, also, we request that property owners notify us of a variety of things upfront. So if anyone's watching this at home and has an invisible fence or irrigation, there's landscaping or trees near the curb, they want to replace their driveway, they have drainage issues, they want to replace their sewer or water service. If they have special needs that we need to be aware of during construction, or if there's any special events that they want to make us aware of, they can notify us on the website or email us on those two email addresses. So tonight is a public hearing, and staff has two recommendations. One is to adopt the resolution to order the project, and the second one is to accept the quotes for this signal equipment.
Okay. Thank you. I want to thank staff for all of the outreach and the community engagement on all of these projects, because it gives our community opportunities to engage with us before we used to have them come into City Hall. But now, we're going out into the neighborhoods that are affected and getting their input. That allows them to speak directly. We're going out to them rather than them coming to us. I think that's a great improvement. So thank you for all of that, because you get direct feedback. Take out the humps or leave them in, you know, so you have good conversation. So thank you for all of that. Members of the council, any questions for Ms. Desroot? Councilmember Workman?
Thank you. Just some really small, tiny questions. On the Buck Hill and Southcross median, are we putting controls in on that median, or are those controls just going on the ends?
I will have to look and see what our signal designer had proposed. We have a signal design for that. As far as if they're going to put push buttons in the median center, I'll have to review that, and I can get back to you.
Okay. And then, on Emerson Court, for those bumpouts that are being removed, is that just going to extend the owner's driveways forward with a new curb line? I guess I'm not used to seeing those types of bumpouts in neighborhoods.
Yeah, so this image that's kind of got the blue and green shows the blue as the extension of the driveway, and the green is new grass. And so, it's just extending the driveways longer, and then filling in the curb moves, and everything behind it is either the driveway extension or grass.
Okay, I missed that the first time around. That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Keely?
In your cost breakout, I didn't see commercial. And Buck Hill's got a lot of commercial. Is that, does that fall into the multifamily?
It's other.
Oh, it's other. Gotcha.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
If you could, since this is an addition late, could you call out that addition and exactly what you're asking for, just so, you know, because we don't, we don't have the documents. People at home didn't have the documents, just so that they know that is the section that was added as an item. Sure.
Yeah. There are two votes that will be taken this evening, so that's the second.
So we have on Buck Hill Road, a bunch of signal work that we're proposing to do. We'll be putting in those pedestrian countdown timers, so pedestrians who are crossing know how much time they have left. And then, we'll be doing a flashing yellow arrow for left turns in all directions. With that, you need new cabinets and new controllers. So we'll be purchasing all of those things in advance. So we'll be purchasing all of those things in advance of the, of even bidding it out to a contractor. And then our specs will say that we have those materials on hand. Those take about twelve weeks to procure. So we got quotes, we just got them today from this company called TCC. And they, they're actually, it's a sole source. We can only go to them. They're the only ones who do this kind of work. So we got the quotes and it is, I think in the, I think it's fifty-eight thousand-ish, the engineer's estimate from our consultant was sixty thousand. So it was, it seemed appropriate. The costs were.
Okay. And one follow-up. So the reason why we're adding this tonight instead of waiting for another night is it solely because of time? Or is it because of time and we're, or we're expecting the price to increase?
It's solely because of time. So if it's a twelve-week lead time, if I were to wait two more weeks, that's just pushing everything out. And then that could be, it could be a cost implication later. But it's, it's mostly time because it takes so long to get those components.
Thank you very much for your clarification.
Okay, anything else?
Given everything I've heard about the construction industry, that's a very smart move to get your order in early.
Yeah, yeah. The supply chain continues to be a, a problem. Okay, thank you, Ms. Desroot. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Ms. Collins, yes, please come forward to, right here. And then give us your address, your name and address for the record.
Cheryl Shapakasi, sixteen oh four Knox Circle. I just want to thank you for, this is the first time I felt so invited into the process.
Yeah.
And it's been amazing. So just to be able to have a dialogue in advance of like, I want to extend the apron on my driveway and finding out I have this as an option. And I just think it's, you guys are awesome. You're doing a great job. So just a comment, thanks.
Thank you, because, you know, that's really helpful for us to know and for our staff. Because I can tell you, we have an awesome staff and they're out there to ensure that we have conversations. So you know who they are. They're human beings and they care and they want that dialogue with our residents. So I'm glad that you're here to, to, to make those remarks because it means a lot to them.
Yes, I've been texting my neighbors saying, we're keeping the, the speed humps. And yay, everybody's like, oh, good. And this is happening next, oh, it's going to look great. So anyway, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming up and making your remarks. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Anyone in queue?
No, madam.
Okay, seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, we have two items before us to vote on. And I will like to take the first motion on the resolution. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
To adopt the resolution?
Councilmember Workman makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Keely. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
I have a comment.
Councilmember Schultz?
I want to clarify because my vote will be a no vote tonight. My no vote is not that we don't need street improvements. It's not that, it's wonderful that we're, you know, involving our, our residents. My no vote is involving, I, I don't like the direction that we're going with our bike lanes. I understand why we're doing that. But I do feel strongly that if, if we are going to have bike lanes and we're doing so to make it more accessible, I, I don't think we're looking ahead far enough. And by not getting those bike lanes and instead of keeping them on the road, you know, placing them where the sidewalk is, but making that, that ten feet rather than the six feet, because we do have that six feet of grass as well. And then dividing that so that we can have all of our non-motorized off of the road. People who walk, people who bike, people who have scooters, e-bikes, mobility devices, that type of thing. I think each time, each time we do this and we go forward with this without looking ahead and, and I think doing it, doing it right in a way that's going to work for us in the future, I think we're making a mistake. So I do want to clarify why my vote will be no tonight.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Desroot?
So if, if Councilmember Schultz's vote is a no, then we cannot order the project.
That's right, because I need four votes.
Can we separate the two?
I need four votes for this, for road construction, because they're bonded. So.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Question for Ms. Desroot. We've had, in the time that I've been on the council, we've had this discussion a lot about what we would like to do in a master plan and what we can afford to do. And what we can afford to do is sort of piecemeal these pieces together that eventually over time make this entire plan and all the trails come together and et cetera, to Councilmember Schultz's point. Can you elaborate on that trail master plan throughout the city where this is a piece of that plan? And maybe without that, it, it's a little difficult to know that we're not just throwing these little pieces here and there on the city. Because it does make it look like we're piecemealing it so bad that you can get on a bike lane on the one road and then it's gone in three blocks and you're back on the street. Or, you know, without a bike lane or you're on the sidewalk, you know, so it's back and forth and back and forth.
So.
Ms. Desroot?
So this image shows how we are extending bike lanes in a, in a connected way. So on Portland, we are going beyond the construction limits to connect rather than just stopping at the, at the construction limits. We're making connections with bike lanes. The, the, removing the lane in each direction on Nicola Boulevard is something.
Connects it to Portland.
It connects to Portland and it connects to Nicolet Avenue. So Nicolet Avenue, it does have to happen piecemeal. We just don't have budget to go and do everything all at once. So I'm planning, planning ahead and thinking, well, when can we get that, that off-street trail on Nicolet? But the, the traffic volumes on both Portland and Nicola Boulevard are within the, the guidelines for putting on-street bike lanes. So we are trying to be cost-effective, but providing opportunity for people who want to ride their bike in these areas.
And I'm going to go to Mr. Lindberg and then Ms. Schultz.
Madam Mayor, I was just going to clarify that the council needed four affirmative votes on this tonight, so.
Yeah. And like I said, it's bonded, so it needs to be four votes for, by state statute.
Yeah, I would defer to the city attorney on the.
Yeah.
Mayor and council, that's under chapter four twenty-nine.
Four twenty-nine.
And it's four-fifths, yep.
May I offer a friendly, a friendly amendment?
Councilmember Schultz?
My friendly amendment is to divide the two questions, one and two, into two separate votes on the recommendation.
It's still, it's a four twenty-nine. And even if you separate it out, it's still road construction and, but we're, there are two different. We have a second vote and that's on to accept the quote for the pre-purchase of the signal light. The first one is the resolution to order the improvements for street reconstruction and rehabilitation and rehab. So if there is.
I do understand that, but if we keep these two together.
We're only doing the, the adoption of the resolution. We're not doing number two. I will come back and ask for the vote for number two, which is to accept the quote. I'm only asking for adoption of the resolution, which is order the improvements. Councilmember Keely?
If we don't have a four-fifths vote tonight, can this item be brought to the work session next week? When we can vote on it again, when all five council members are present?
We can do that because it is a noted meeting and this item can be continued to the work session next week.
Well, we typically don't take votes at the work sessions. So it would be, need to be continued to the next regular meeting of the council.
We, that typically, that's true, but we have. We have, but I don't know. Ms. Collins, is there a policy that we have that says, we have taken votes at a work session?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, we, we actually did change that policy quite a few years ago. Once we started televising our work sessions.
Yeah.
So that the, and then the council did start taking action at the work sessions. So that's been a common practice for, geez, it's probably been.
Quite a few years.
Well, since, it was two years after we started televising our work sessions.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I will move table this to next week's work session.
Is that going to screw up Jen's timeline?
Pardon me?
I was just clarifying if that was going to screw up Jen's timeline, but she said no.
We, we can, we'll, we'll plan, we're currently planning to open bid, or to open bids at the end of March. And I think we'll be okay with a one week.
Just a one, a one-week delay? Okay, there's a motion to delay this to next week's work session.
A second.
And there's a second. The clerk, take the roll, please.
Councilmember Keely?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Workman?
Aye.
Mayor, council.
Yes. Okay, so this item is going to be delayed, the, the adoption of the resolution to next week. But I am going to take a motion to accept the quote for the pre-purchase of the signal equipment from Traffic Control Corporation in the amount of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven and twenty cents.
Move to, oh, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. And the clerk has the division at the House.
The previous motion, I do.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
The next item is also, yes, please.
Could you just explain what happened to the first one?
Oh, the first one is.
What actually ends up happening?
Oh, thank you so much for the question. Because it is by statute that to do road construction, we need four votes. Councilmember Schultz is, is descending on that. So instead of not having the project going forward, we're delaying the vote and revisit the item next week at our work session. And then we will vote on it, on just the resolution for the, the road reconstruction.
Thank you. Now, if it is voted in favor.
Yes.
Then it progresses without any delays.
It goes forward.
If it's denied, then what happens? It stops for the.
Yeah, for the, yeah, for the year, that, which means that it'll just, everything else for the next three, four years is going to be just pushed because it's going to cost a lot more money.
So this could go till next year or the next year?
Hopefully not. We'll have, Councilmember Gustafson is absent this evening. His mother passed away. So he is not with us, but I am sure he will be at the next council work, at next week, at the work session.
Then that brings up a question. If he's not, then what happens?
Then we might also push this to the next week so that we can have all members, council members, present. But it is difficult when we don't have road construction. As you know, we do road construction in Minnesota every year. And when we don't, it just gets delayed. And then all of the other projects that are on the books will all get pushed. And those families and those businesses will not be happy.
I totally understand. And for the record, my name's Donna Hanley. I'm at twelve twenty-eight Emerson Court. So, and I too want to second what the other lady said. It was wonderful to have those neighborhood meetings where we could just have an informal gathering and talking to your staff. They were marvelous, very open-minded, accepting for suggestions, thoughts that we had, concerns that we had, things that we noticed that they didn't notice. It was wonderful. So I too want to thank your staff.
Thank you so much. It means a great deal to our staff and to us to know that coming out and having that conversation with all of you, we can solve anything and we can move forward with anything in our community. So, you know, and it's the same thing with regard to bike lanes. It's talking with the people like at the hospital. We have a lot of bikers in our community. And, and that's the direction, yeah.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary, Madam Mayor.
And thank you so much for coming forward and giving us your thoughts. It is really appreciated, truly. We're grateful.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Name and address for the record.
Hi, Barb Shaw, fourteen nine zero four Judicial Road. I'm just wondering, Congresswoman Schultz, could you re-explain your position? I'm not quite sure I understood it.
Absolutely. My position on this is as we go forward with, especially when we're looking at concepts like complete streets and multimodal and all that kind of stuff, what we're really talking about is building for how people want to get around, whether that's car or bike or if they need a mobility scooter or anything like that. In previous conversations about this, I, I have put forward, and I also understand that there are budgetary constraints on this, that as we go forward, instead of creating a bike lane, which is basically just painting a piece of the, the street, that instead what we look at is on the sidewalk, those, instead of being a sidewalk, they become more like a trail. And they're, instead of six feet across, they're ten feet across, which means we can divide them, which we see in the Twin Cities and in suburbs are doing this as well. And pedestrians are on one part of it. And then you can have your bikes, mobility scooters, electric bikes, all of those types of things that are not motorized. And then they're up on that area and they're not in traffic. So they're not sharing that with motorized vehicles. So when we're looking at how do we want to connect, connect people and trails and how people get around? How do we want to improve safety? That's how we do it. And looking at each time we build this more and more in, that it's just going to be a painted stripe on the street, we're not getting to where we should be going. And we have an extensive trail system. And our trail system, you know, you can have your bikes on it and you can walk on it and you can have your mobility scooters and you can do all those kinds of things on it. And we've been working really hard to connect those trails up. But then we're looking at our streets, like our regular streets and our bike lanes and our sidewalks. And we're not doing that. So we're, like, this then becomes a little disjointed and disconnected. So it's, it's not that I'm opposing any streets or anything like that. It, it's that I'm concerned each time we go forward on this and do it this way, we're, we're cutting out decades because it is a long time before you revisit those areas again of doing this to where we're connecting it the right way.
So keep the bike lane on the street as proposed, but add a change to the sidewalk to allow for other, like, scooters or.
Actually, bikes, bikes would be on there too. So it's anything really that's non-motorized, but the, the stripe down the, the center of it, of the trail and pedestrians are on one area. And then you have your bikes and your scooters and that type of thing on, on that other side of it. So they're, they're actually off of, off of the street.
Off of the street.
Yeah. So I, you know, I'm hoping that we, we have that infrastructure. And, and what you all witnessed was my colleagues being courteous of me and me being courteous of my colleagues. And so that's why you saw this tabled to next week.
Yeah. And it's a difference of opinion and there's been a lot of research around all of this. And because we've had conversations with our residents, if you're going to do it, expand the sidewalks, that means you're going to be taking some of the property also from residents if we're going to go down that road.
Yeah, it would be the strip of grass between the street and the sidewalk.
And so all of that, all of that has been taken into consideration. So it was a, it was a, a comprehensive study that our staff did and also included some of our residents in that conversation. And we landed on this methodology, which is used throughout, you know, not throughout the country.
Understood, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Slapped when you approved the financing, so.
Thank you so much. It's really great. I'm so glad that you all are here and that you've had a good experience with our staff and this, this model and coming out and, and talking to all of you. Because that's the direction. It's for us. It's for us to engage with all of you. And so I'm glad that you're here to say it is a great experience, thank you so much. Okay. We did take the vote, and now we are moving on to five B, yes?
I just wanna, if I may, comment.
Yes, Councilmember Keely.
I'm in a hundred percent agreement with Councilmember Schultz's position. In our past discussions about bike trails, I have made the statement more than once, I personally don't feel comfortable riding on a street in a bike lane when there's cars whipping by me. It is, it is an anxious position to be in. Almost all the riders that I talk to or ride with would prefer to get off the street, but in many cases, there just isn't a sidewalk or a trail, and so you're stuck on a street. And sometimes a street has a bike lane, then suddenly it's gone, and so now you're in the traffic lane, and then suddenly it comes back. And so thinking in that long-term perspective, as Councilmember Schultz alluded to, is once we do this, it's gonna be there for a very, very, very long time. And so I, I respect her cautioning, saying, why don't we take the longer view? And maybe we should vet this process for a wider sidewalk than just putting a bike lane in. Unfortunately, in Burnsville, we don't have very many sidewalks to begin with. And so we're, I mean, I see, and, and I, this is the other piece of that argument, I have friends in wheelchairs, and they have commented to me since I, before I was elected, of how terrible it is to get around in the city of Burnsville if you're in a wheelchair, because there's not even sidewalks to get on, you know, let alone wide sidewalks. They're many times in the street on their wheelchair, getting around town, and it is horrible. That is not a safe option for them. And ironically, this winter, I've already seen one person in a wheelchair on the street because the sidewalk still was plowed, but it had so much sort of left on it that it was crusty and bumpy. The street was cleaner, so they chose to wheel their wheel, their wheelchair in the street as opposed to what would have been a bumpier ride on the sidewalk. And so it really, that just magnifies the challenge for those with mobility challenges. And so to Councilmember Schultz's point, I, I would much prefer a trail being put in too. But we do have significant cost challenges to get there, and because in many cases there isn't a sidewalk, the person's lawn goes right up to the curb, we would be taking a ten-foot swath of land in their front yard to be able to put this in. So there are lots of challenges to get there, but I think, I love the dialogue, and I think we oughta continue to talk about this more when we talk about these street projects. Thank you.
And we need to continue to make sure that our residents are a part of it. And here's the reason being, because we've had this conversation before. And because when Burnsville was built and developed, a lot of the developers did not put in sidewalks. So now, when we go in and do road construction, and we always ask, do you want sidewalks? And they said, no, we don't want sidewalks, we're okay with our law, with our yards. So when we do that, we will need to always engage our residents in that conversation and make sure that, because it is taking part of their property as well. And maybe some of the, the easements belong to the city, but the, the residents have been using that as part of their lawn, and so it is a conversation that we have to engage everybody in it if we're gonna make those changes, and it is going to be costly. Okay, all right.
Fair assessment, yeah.
Yeah. So we will now move on to item five B, and this too is a public hearing. And this is to approve on-sale wine malt liquor for Kazuku, Kazu, Kazoku. I think I had Kazoku.
Great job, Madam Mayor.
Kazoku, yeah, okay. Our city clerk, Michelle Collins, is presenting. Ms. Collins.
Thank you. I think you did a pretty good job with pronouncing that, it's about as good as I can do. Kazoku has submitted their application for an on-sale beer and wine liquor license. This is a new Japanese restaurant, and it's in that Donut Star Strip Mall on Cliff there. The license issuance, it, or was, the investigation has been conducted. At the time this background was written, it had not been completed yet, but it has been completed now, the print, on the principals involved, and no reason was found to deny the license. The license issues will be contingent upon making sure all payment of license fees and submittal of all documentation is in order. And I, this is a public hearing, I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Collins? Pardon me?
Is the applicant here?
No, because it's a very straightforward kinda thing.
Sometimes they show up and, and ask them to talk about their issue.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, and, yeah, and, and so Kazoku, yeah, it is. And Kazoku, it has been here, and they're just asking for a wine and malt license. This is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Ms. Collins, anyone? Okay. Very good, is there anyone in queue?
No, Madam Mayor.
I will close the public hearing. Member of the council, may I have a motion, please, to approve the liquor license?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries, thank you. We are at item five C, and five C is to approve the planning, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission work plan. And presenting this evening is Chair Chris John of the Planning Commission. Chair John, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and city council members and city staff. I come to before you to talk a little bit about the city, the Planning Commission, excuse me, and what we have going for this year and what we have accomplished over the past year. You know, we'll start with the past year highlights. One, we had some updates to the twenty forty comprehensive plan, we're looking at land use, text and map updates, looking at changing some zoning around the city, make more mixed-use areas. We continue updates as anticipated, and we'll do some more general implementation in zoning changes as, as went forward in twenty twenty-one. We also did County Road forty-two redevelopment vision implementation. More land use changes, mainly around the center village, that has become a big focus of the area. There was a traffic study that went through, and the multimodal study as well, and the right-of-way for Aldrick Road was something that came before us. We're also updating titles ten and eleven, as you had requested on the city code. Again, more zoning updates, and we went through some education opportunities. I think all of us, most of us participated with the UTLI this past month, I think it was December. It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, it was fun.
I hope we have more going forward as well. Which brings us to our proposed, proposed action items in twenty twenty-two. We'd like to continue with the twenty forty comprehensive plan update, more implementations, more zoning, looking to make Burnsville a much more friendly place for businesses and for residents alike. Continuing on, the County Road forty-two redevelopment vision. Again, center village is gonna be focused going into this year, I believe. And then also zoning ordinance that have to do with the lower Mississippi, Minnesota River watershed district. And we'll continue on with the city code updates for title ten and eleven going forward, and I'll go on for at least another year. With that, we, I think I covered most of these things already.
Yeah.
And we'd like to make a recommendation, city council adopt our twenty twenty-two work plan, and I would stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz.
I would like to thank you and, and your commission for all the work that you're doing. In addition to the, the usual workload that you have, redoing that section ten and eleven is, is a really, really big and important piece of work that you're doing, and it, it definitely adds to the time. So I wanted to extend my appreciation to all of the work that you're doing and all of the, the real careful but exciting work that you're doing. And what you're doing not only makes our job easier, but it, it makes our city better. So I'm really appreciative, and unless anyone else has something to say, I will so move.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will echo in a second.
And Mr. John, please, extend our deep appreciation to members of the Planning Commission. You have accomplished quite a bit in twenty-one, and you still have a lot of work moving forward, and appreciate all of that. I was also going to say that extend our appreciation because there were quite a few members of the Planning Commission at our all-day work session with ULI. And I thought that was a very, very useful activity for all of us and to understand how things really unfold from a technical perspective and from the developer's perspective, and that was useful for all of us to hear the same thing and go through the same experience together. So please thank them, because you had a pretty good showing.
We did, I think we had perfect attendance from the Planning Commission.
You did.
I'm not, I'm just saying.
I, I, I think you did, out of all of the commissions, I think planning-
We took the cake, yeah.
Had a, had a perfect attendance, so.
But it, it gave us more of appreciation to the work that Sarah Madden and Deb Garros do for us, what, what they have to balance when they do their work, so.
Did you, were you on the winning team?
No, me and Sarah were on the winning team.
Oh, yeah.
We came, I, I believe I came in in close second, that's why, that's what we're going with.
Was that close?
I think Ms. Madden, with her skills, drove that process.
Probably. Thank you, thank you for all the nice comments, too, and really appreciate working with you guys, and.
Well, you know, if you've noticed, that most of the work that comes from your commission lands on our consent agenda because you vetted all of the issues, and you've discussed it thoroughly, so that you take a vote and you render a unanimous decision for us.
I hope, sometimes we, we do throw a negative vote in there just to-
To keep us on our toes.
Put you, put it out of your attention, I guess, the best way to do it, so.
We've noticed, we've, we've seen a couple, but most of the time, most of the time, they all come unanimous.
Right.
So, but thank you so much, and please extend our gratitude.
Yeah, I also wanna appreciate, Councilmember Schultz is our liaison, she does a great job staying connected with us, even as much as our previous one commissioner of workment, or council member of workment.
She's a slacker, though.
Calling me and yelling at me, now they're nice to you.
Maybe because you deserved it, and I don't-
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and the motion carries, thank you so much. The next item is the Parks and Natural Resources Commission work plan. And presenting this evening is Ms. Woolman, Chair Woolman from the PNRC. And welcome, Ms. Woolman.
Thank you for having me, good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. Thank you for having me tonight to present the PNRC Parks and Natural Resources annual work plan. And I don't have anyone else with us, but I believe JJ is out there somewhere, listening in.
Okay, I think we have the Public Works Director.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan.
It's good to see you.
It's good to see you.
So he, you've got staff member here that-
And Jen, I mean, she's with us a lot, so.
Yeah, so.
And JJ's on Zoom.
And JJ's on Zoom, yes, so.
Zoom, zoom.
There we go.
Yeah.
So here are our annual activities that we review on a annual basis. These are ongoing, I'm not gonna go through them tonight because these just kind of go over, roll over from year to year. We will be doing a review of the Parks A P in March, so that is coming up next month. Our special projects for this year, we plan to review our wetland replacement plan, I thirty-five W Frontage Trail Project, that has been really fun to kind of watch that process go through and all of the work that has gone into that. We have our trail project and multimodal update, which goes right in with Ms. Desrood's update tonight. And then we have our natural resources master plan final draft presentation coming up, State of the Parks, Kelleher Trailhead, and the Crystal Beach Master Plan Project. And then continuing on, we will review concept plans for Lac Levon Nature Play Area. We'll be modeling that after the Terrace Oaks natural play area. Our goal is to have quite a few scattered around the city, so we're moving on to our second one this year. We will also be updating on the County Road forty-two and Medical District. We wanna see how those relate to Parks and Natural Resources, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of cement, we wanna add in more nature, kind of decrease the amount of warming that is happening there, seeing what we can do. We're really excited to learn about the Pollinator Lawn Demonstration Project that Caleb spoke with us last night. And then the update on the Minnesota River Pollution Prevention Programs. We've seen a lot of concerns about that on social media, and so we wanna know, what are they doing? And then finally, findings from the park, park and recreation engagement sessions, and curious about staff and what's happening over the summer, what's coming up, what's in the planning works. And that's our, our annual update, do you have any questions?
No, but I just, also just want to thank you all for all the great work, because when I look at the work that you all have been doing and all of the renovations to all of our parks, we have so much work to be done, and so I'm glad that you're gonna continue to look at the Parks Master Plan and look at all of the different parks that need work. And I'm really happy that we're addressing Kelleher Park.
Yes.
That needs attention.
Yes.
Yes, and so the trail projects, especially with finishing the Lake Marion Trail, that's still going to be a big issue.
Yep.
And funding going forward, so thank you for all of that. And please extend our appreciation to the members of the Park and Natural Resource Commission for all the work that you all are doing. The Lac Levon Nature Play Area, I'm really looking forward to understand how all of that is going to, what that's going to look like. You know, everything that we did at Terrace Oaks is really wonderful. Now, I'm not quite sure what Lac Levon is going to look like. I, you know, because Terrace Oaks is very different in, in, in terms of its nature and, and the, um, the area. And then Lac Levon is sort of like flat. So I'm curious as to what that's going to look like afterwards.
But Madam Mayor, there's nature everywhere.
I know, but, but you know, when you're Terrace Oaks, the kids are climbing up trees, and there's, they hike through and all of that. Lac Levon, I think I have to walk that area again and really take a look at it, because it's really wonderful, but it's really flat.
A little bit of creativity can make anything happen.
I'm looking forward to you, you guys, and the creativity that you're all gonna come out with that. So thank you for all of that. And the Medical District is also another very interesting concept that you all are focusing on. So I'm looking forward to seeing what that's going to look like.
Me too.
Yeah, you've got a lot of big work ahead of you.
We're very ambitious.
Good. Thank you. Members of the council, Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you for the presentation. I've been hearing a lot about pickleball from residents. In a recent breakfast meeting, someone very deeply engaged in our community was giving me a little update on our pickleball deficiency and was asking, when are we gonna catch on to the fact that pickleball is so big? And what are we doing about it, are we adding more courts? And they also noted, one of our recent courts, I don't know if it was Red Oaks or not, but- And they also noted, one of our recent courts, I don't know if it was Red Oaks or not, but that the paint was already peeling off and was an issue. But have, did the commission, has the commission talked about where they want to go with pickleball to be able to meet the demands of pickleball, which seems to be the hottest play activity of all ages in our parks? And it seems to be growing fast.
It absolutely is. And it's in our parks master plan and looking at where can we put more pickleball courts? There's a park that we just renovated, that was just renovated to add in a pickleball section. It works really well next to the tennis courts. And so that's kind of what we, when we've met and talked about, that's what the aim looks like it is. I was looking at, where can we squeeze that in with the tennis courts and, without making the tennis players too angry either? Because there are concerns. You don't want to mix those two courts up, or the nets, or the paint.
And I thank you for all of that because there is this big conflict between tennis players and pickleball players, and one is not privileged over the other. And tennis courts did not get renovated for a long time, both the one at Neal and at East Terrace Oaks. And finally, they got renovated this last year. Am I correct, Mr. Peterson? I know we did, I know we did Neal.
Madam Mayor, everything is done except for the final striping and color coding at Terrace Oaks.
At Terrace Oaks.
Yep. Otherwise, Neal's done, you're correct.
Yeah. Because, and there's always that balance between the different uses. And so I appreciate the struggle that you all are going through. But we have a lot of active residents, both on the pickleball side and also on the tennis side. So we did take away some tennis courts to, at Red Oak, to enlarge the pickleball court. But I don't know what we're going to be doing in the future as, and that's why the Parks Master Plan, to really understand what are we going to do, was trying to balance all of that out. So I think that's something you all are going to be tackling. Yeah, right? Mr. Peterson?
Yeah. Where do we invest? We got, all comes out of the same money, trails, renovations, Kellahur Park.
It all costs money.
It's all, where is the?
Yeah.
And for the record, the re-striping of the Red Oak Court is planned for this upcoming summer.
Yeah, and that would be good. Then all of our residents who play tennis will probably then not keep emailing and calling me because now they're done.
They'll call you and email you when we're color coding because they won't be able to play pickleball for a while. Just for the record.
Okay.
I'm now picturing our tennis people and our pickleball people singing, "When you're a jet, you're a jet all the way."
We're going to be snapping at each other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, of course, there's a residence who live by the pickleball court, and all they hear is ping, ping, ping. And we get all of those complaints also because that's what they hear all through. And then when they're open until 10 o'clock, and that's the sound that they hear. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
We are working on getting some of those noise.
Sound mitigation.
On that side of the fence that borders the properties. It's legit.
Yeah, it all takes money.
It does.
Yeah. And putting up all of those. Councilmember Workman.
I will be brief. I just am curious if there's been any discussion about our Fire Station One site amongst our PNRC or our staff and if they're going to be doing any work, looking at that as a potential future green space. And that's something that we've tossed around. We're not making any commitments right now, but just planting some seeds.
Yes, Mr. Peterson, and then I'll go to Mr. Lindbergh.
From the Center Village Plan, that was shown as a park in that particular plan. The north side of 42 is years and years out, but it did show it that way. Obviously, the Sustainability Plan would love to turn that into green space. And I think that's probably what you're talking about as well, is trying to get some green space possibilities up in the whole business corridor there. So that's, that's how I look at it. Others may look at it differently from making the site on the tax base or something like that.
Get a lot of green space in Burnsville, so it's kind of exciting.
It all comes down to us when we do the budget.
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Lindbergh.
Mr. Peterson covered it fantastically as usual. Right now, the council's direction to Councilmember Workman's comments to staff has been to raise the current or the existing Fire Station One facility. And the plan to Mr. Peterson's comments is to maintain that as open green space at this point in time, pending further direction from the council.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Members of the council, may I have a motion to adopt the Parks and Natural Resources 2022 Work Plan?
I will make the motion to adopt the 2022 work plan.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you so much. And please extend our gratitude to the members of the PNRC.
Absolutely. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is to approve the 2022 Economic Development Commission Work Plan. And presenting is Chair Crystal Fitchett from the Economic Development Commission. Chair Fitchett, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, council members and others. My name is Crystal Fitchett, and I am the Chair of the Economic Development Commission. And I'm here to present on behalf of that committee or commission. So the first thing I'll do is I'll cover some of the highlights of the 2021 work that we did. So we continued implementation and progress tracking of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. We received some updates for the ISD 191 Communications Strategic and Pathways Program. We also participated in the Urban Land Institute Training and in the Heart of the City Design Framework Joint Commission Session and provided some recommendations on the housing loan and grant policies program. And one of the activities we did was attended the Chamber Events, AEM Coffee and Ribbon Cuttings ceremonies. So that's some of the highlights of 2021. For 2022, some of the proposed action plans or action items that we are hoping you will consider is for the zoning code updates. We'll continue to provide input on that. Grow Minnesota and the Chamber Partnership Review. We'll also be reviewing the City BRNE Program as well as the City Diverse BRNE Program. Some of the initiatives that we are hoping to continue is for the Economic Development Strategic Plan work, training opportunities, land sales at TIF, ELF, grant recommendations as needed, ribbon cuttings, and open to business engagement. Madam Chair, I believe that in your packets tonight, you have a more comprehensive list of some of the initiatives that we have been working on. And so for this evening, the Economic Development Council, our commission is looking for you to adopt that one.
And Chair Fitchett, thank you for all of the work that the Economic Development Commission is doing. We really appreciate all of the work that you're doing with regard to all of this and appreciate the open to business because that's giving technical assistance to our small businesses and also to some of our entrepreneurs. So it's great that we continue to do that work. And it looks like you have a very full plan for 2022. And I thank you and your colleagues and the commission for your work.
Madam Chair, thank you. It's been an exciting year. And open to business has been a good experience to learn from and then for our public to understand how that they can have businesses in the Burnsville area. So we've, we've learned a lot from that. And we're looking forward to do some more exciting work presented to the council.
Are there any questions for Chair Fitchett? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the work plan before us? Pardon me?
Are you the liaison?
I am the liaison.
She can.
But I'll make a motion on your behalf to accept the Economic Development Committee's or Commission's work plan for 2022.
Thank you.
I will second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. No, they, they do great work. And you've been busy.
Yes, we have.
Very busy. And so it's wonderful to see all of the engagement from all of the members of the commission. So thank you.
Yes, we're looking forward to working together next year.
Okay. Take care and have a good evening. And now, the next item is the application of South Cross Commons LLC for rezoning from I-3 Office and Industrial Park to I-3 PUD Office and Industrial Park Plan Unit Development Concept and Development Stage Plan Unit Development to allow a medical service or clinic use within the existing building and preliminary and final plat of the South Cross Commons located at 300 County Road 42 West. And presenting this evening is Ms. Sarah Mattson. Ms. Mattson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. So the item that is before you this evening is related to a site just north of County Road 42, near the intersection of Burnsville Parkway and South Cross and County Road 42, kind of that interesting intersection there. So this is a application that was before the Planning Commission at their January 24th meeting for public hearing and discussion. As part of that discussion, to review the plan unit development and the preliminary and final plat, there was some discussion amongst the commission members about the, that park dedication was not to be calculated and included in the recommendation for approval with the plat application. So that was part of their discussion. And as with that, there was a dissenting vote to the recommendation of approval. Just as a quick overview of the application, there is a plat of the property associated with the plan unit development creation. The deviations within the plan unit development are related primarily to the existing condition setbacks of the structure. There is no exterior improvements to the site as part of the application. However, it was for an interior land use of medical, which is a conditional use in the underlying I-3 Office Industrial zoning district. So again, as part of that discussion, related to the creation of the plan unit development, the rezoning and the preliminary and final plat, the staff background to the Planning Commission did indicate that the park dedication fee was not to be calculated as part of this proposal, and there were no exterior improvements. But there was a dissenting vote related to that topic, and that is why this is before you on your regular agenda this evening. The staff recommendation and the 3-1 vote from the Planning Commission was to recommend approval of the application, subject to the five conditions that were outlined in this slideshow and in both background reports. So there are no changes to the recommendation. That was before the Planning Commission at their January 24th meeting.
Yeah, Ms. Madden, your background was very informative because you're not extending the footprint of the building. So you're only making changes within the building.
That's correct.
And so there is no need for a park dedication. And it already has been done for this property.
So I'll send that question or confirmation over to Jen Desrood, the city engineer.
Ms. Desrood.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, because the property had never been platted before, it has not paid park dedication. But there have been findings from our city attorney, Joel, with other applications that if they aren't expanding the use.
The footprint.
Or even the use, that there's no, no new expected use of the park system based on this application. So even though they hadn't paid it in the past, that had been the findings, and so that's what we based that on.
Okay, yeah. And that's what I read in the background. So, but it would be triggered, the park dedication will be triggered if the building was then expanded.
If they were to expand now, after it's been platted, we would not necessarily collect park dedication. It's usually triggered with a plat.
Yeah.
So they aren't proposing any expansion, and so we recommended no park dedication.
Yeah. And that made sense. Okay. Councilmember Workman.
I just want to follow up on that question. So if the use had been something more dense, like a roller rink or something, would that have triggered the justification to do or implement a park dedication fee?
No, because it's still a commercial use. And so we base park dedication for commercial industrial based on the land area, 5% of the land area, no matter what the use is. If it were to be adding residential units, then it would be a change of use and we would calculate park dedication.
Thank you.
There's no change in the use. Well, Ms. Madden, I think you had a very robust conversation around this also at the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
So, very good. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Madden. Okay. And I will now recess the Burnsville City Council meeting so the Economic Development Authority meeting can convene. Vice President Schultz, the floor is yours.
I call the Economic Development Authority meeting to order. Please note for the record that President Gustafson is not present. Are there any additions to the final agenda? Okay, seeing none, we move on. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and there are no other items on the regular agenda, so a motion to adjourn would be appreciated.
Motion to adjourn.
Don't, what am I looking at?
Yeah, I thought there was.
Is that on consent?
Yeah.
It said, right, it's on consent, and that was it.
Second.
Yeah.
I'm dense, there's tacos at the American Legion tonight.
Sorry.
Taco Tuesday.
So you're taking the vote now?
Taking the vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Back to you, Mayor Schultz.
Thank you. I now reconvene the Burnsville City Council meeting, and there are no items to come before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. And good night, and thank you for being with us.